The lights of Kentucky Performing Arts shine on more than our shows. They illuminate a pathway of discovery for all throughout our Commonwealth. A pathway of creativity, confidence, possibility, of brilliance, inspiration, curiosity, and wonder. For forty years, Kentucky Performing Arts has led a pathway to unite the Commonwealth around the joy of discovering the arts, and will continue to shine this light far into the future.
E. Paul X. Kennedy asked a very powerful question. This is his question: What if we realized the best way to ensure an effective educational system not by standardizing our curriculum, or by standardizing our tests, but by standardizing the opportunities of learning for all students? Here's the question from E. Paul X. Kennedy. Please join me in delivering our position over the conference. Thank you. Please stand before the press committee.
To the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Our vision is for all Jefferson County Public Schools students to graduate prepared, empowered, inspired, to reach their full potential, and to contribute as responsible, thoughtful citizens of our diverse shared world.
Thank you, Ms. Duncan. Now I would like to introduce Chief Colonel Helen Hand of our work division.
Good evening, everyone. Thank you so much for having me. Great things happen every day inside every JCPS school, and our recognitions are a way to highlight some of those amazing accomplishments that are taking place. We have several recognitions tonight. So first, tonight, we recognize fifteen JCPS schools that have received state recognition for implementing positive behavioral interventions and supports with fidelity. This represents a significant increase from last year, when five of our schools received this recognition. When implemented with fidelity, PDIS improves social emotional competence, academic success, and school climate, and it also improves teacher health and well-being. So let's join me in recognizing Auburndale Elementary. Price Elementary. Wilder Elementary. Home of the innocent school. Brick Lawn. Bowlin Elementary. Goldsmith Elementary. W.E.B. Du Bois Academy. Enzo Trail Middle School. No Middle. The Benet School. The Brown School. Central High. McFerrin Promontory Academy. Congratulations. Next, tonight, we honor the Valley High School Band. This program is on a roll. The twenty-one member band has gathered a series of achievements, including participation in the Jefferson Music Educators Association State Marching Band Championships, Midstates Band Association Regional Championship, and the Bands of America Grand Nationals in Indianapolis, all for the first time. They also achieved first place in the Lexus and Hero Theater Small Band Poll, receiving more than five thousand votes for Best Small Band in Kentucky. Continuing our recognitions tonight, we honor the JCPS Language Services Division for its role in helping the district win the Language Line Solutions Customer of the Year Award. This is the first time the school district has won this award. JCPS's efforts to provide language services for all students and families is what led to this national award, and the award shows JCPS is a pioneering school district when it comes to providing language support, translation services, and technologies to our families. Congratulations and thank you. Next, tonight, we are celebrating six JCPS schools that were awarded National Magnet Schools Certification by Magnet Schools of America. The schools' magnet coordinators, principals, and leadership teams spent many hours providing documentation to show alignment to MSA's five standards of excellence, which are diversity, innovative curriculum and professional development, academic excellence, leadership and family and community partnerships. Join me in congratulating Farnsley Middle School, Auburn Elementary, The Brown School, No Middle School, W.E.B. Du Bois Academy, and Westport Middle School. Congratulations. And tonight, we are recognizing the Eastern High School cheerleading team. The Eagles team out of separate two teams in the division. They topped Bull and East by more than a point. The Johnson-Grant Eastern was a job solid stuff and smooth tactic. Great job, Mr. Shear. They definitely know how to line up for the picture. Great job, congratulations. And finally, tonight, we recognize you all, our Jefferson County Board of Education. January is National School Board Recognition Month, and it is our honor to recognize you all for your outstanding leadership, dedication, and contributions. Board members work tirelessly to ensure a successful learning environment for all of our students, and we appreciate each and every one of you, so thank you.
Thank you, Chief Colonel Helen Hand. Let's hear the gifts for all of our students who recognize and admire the board members. We all will be welcome, our newly elected board members.
I do solemn swear that I will support the Constitution of the United States and the Constitution of this Commonwealth, and be faithful and true to the Commonwealth of Kentucky, so long as I continue a citizen there, and that I will faithfully execute with the best of my ability the office of members of the Jefferson County Board of Education, according to the law, and I do further solemn swear that since the adoption of the Constitution, I, being a citizen of this state, have not fought a duel with deadly weapons within this state, not out of this, nor have I sent or accepted a challenge, nor have I dueld with deadly weapons, nor have I acted as a second and carried a challenge, nor aided or assisted any person, just a pending, so help me God.
Thank you so much, Judge Davis. Congratulations, Board Member Bass, Board Member Everett, Board Member Lister, and Board Member Strang. We will now open the floor to the ones who recognize family members that they do here as well. Mr. Bass?
Well, I want to say thank you to my whole family, entire family, extended family, my mentors, New Land, yes, you are online, and everyone who supported me, the public process, the encouragement, and I promise you, I'm gonna do my best, and we all gonna fight together. Thank you. My wife and my people. Oh, my whole principal this day, too. Y'all know the map real quick. Board Member Bass, if you will stay seated, alright? Yeah, and you all go right over there with your dad, and take a picture with them. Y'all got a good pass, then this is a cold-out moment.
That's beautiful. Ms. Everett?
Thank you to my wife, thank you to my daughter, thank you to my district and the city as a whole, electing me. What I can promise you guys is you're gonna be a tireless effort to make this the best district in the entire country, and I promise to listen to every decision that I can, and give thought to every single decision that we make. I don't take this position lightly, and I thank you for the trust that you put in myself for the whole. Fortunately, my daughter from the seventh grade is too old to be here, and my wife is working fine. That's all I got.
I'd just like to say thank you to my community for putting this trust in me in this very important job, thank you to my family for putting up with running an election and supporting me in every way in this endeavor, and I promise to give you my absolute best, and I voted JCPS one million percent. Thank you.
My family said they had enough last year. I'm just teasing. But I too want to thank everyone who voted for me, who put their confidence in me, who prayed for me, because I know there were a lot of you who sent up prayers, and just to thank you for your support. And is that my niece then? No, okay, the niece just like my niece pretty much. Again, thank you, and again, this is not a position to be taken lightly, it's not for the faint of heart, because there is much work to do, and so I appreciate you entrusting me with this position to do what's needed to ensure that every child in JCPS gets a quality education.
This organizational meeting of board of education of Jefferson County is convened in accordance with KRS 160.160, which requires board of educations to elect a chairperson and vice chairperson to term in space by the board. Board policy 01941 requires that the senior member at the first grade or fourth, major held in January. Therefore, the officers shall serve a wounded or ensure their success is only in the next month or a year. I will call for nominations for the board for a chairperson to serve a wounded. After all nominations for a chairperson have been made, I propose nominations. I will call for a vote on candidates nominated, who will be taken in the order in which the candidates will nominate. At the conclusion of the voting, I would declare, assuming the candidate has been voted, is the group receiving the most votes to be elected chairperson. The newly elected chairperson shall similarly conduct the edition of the vice chairperson. Is there a nomination for board chairperson? Ms. Craig?
I nominate Dr. Morgan Smith.
Are there any nominations, Ms. Duncan?
There was a nomination, Dr. Morgan.
Any nominations? Okay, Ms. Duncan is moving to second, Mr. Craig's motion. All in favor? I have a comment. Thank you. Is there a nomination for vice chairperson? Ms. Lister?
I nominate James Craig for vice chair.
I would like to second him. All in favor? I have a comment. Thank you. Is there a motion to approve the unveiling? Craig, if that is all in favor? Is there a motion to approve minutes of piece of the seventeen, the first ten nineteen, or seventeen, excuse me? Ms. Craig, Ms. Duncan, all in favor? I have a comment. I'm glad to introduce our superintendent, Dr. Morgan O'Neal. This is the last January meeting.
This is the last January meeting.
Congratulations to those...
We got ways to go. Thank you, Dr. Show, the board members, and the superintendent for January twenty-eighth. And I'll try to make this brief and possible, because I know we have a lot on the agenda this evening. I wanted to take this opportunity to officially welcome our new board members to the Jefferson County Board of Education, and as was just said, I know I'll only get to work with you all for the next few months, but I'm honored to be able to be on the same team with you for a short period of time and do everything possible to support the kids in JCPS. So to Trevon Bass, Tricia Lister, and Taylor Everett, I'd like to say thank you for serving our ninety-eight thousand students in this community. I know this is not an easy job, a pretty much volunteer job, but in the limited time we could work together, I can tell you're truly doing this for the right reasons, which I said is the most important thing, and continue to do what's best for students, the best we absolutely can. So thank you and welcome, and glad to work with you for the next several months. Tonight, you'll hear some positive data from both our Explore Pathways and Academies of Global presentation. You will also see positive trend data on the ninth and tenth grade reading and math data as we review our bulletin guardrails. As you know, each of these last three meetings, we've had the opportunity to present you very positive data around literacy and math tools, which I'm very proud of, and I'm also very optimistic about the future of this district as we see this trend data continuing to rise with the work that we are doing. Before I conclude, I would like to highlight another point of data just that is positively impacting our students from the first semester of school, which I think is one of the most important data points that we can look at. We have seen a very significant decline in the number of students who are chronically absent in our schools from twenty-three, twenty-four to twenty-four, twenty-five, and I'll remind you, chronic absenteeism is marked by a student missing ten percent or more of their school days over the course of the year, which equates to about seventeen and a half school days. So there's very little chance, as you can imagine, for schools or teachers that will be successful in catching up a student or even keeping them on track if a student is chronically absent. And so chronic absenteeism is one of the highest correlates to not scoring proficient on state or math testing, and so it is a very important data point for us. In twenty-three, twenty-four, a staggering thirty-three point nine percent of our students were classified as chronically absent, and in the same amount of days in twenty-four, twenty-five, so comparing the exact same amount of days, it's down to twenty-eight point four percent. Way too much still, but a very significant drop, and I just want to say, we say percentages a lot, this equates to four thousand one hundred and fifty-seven students chronically that are chronically absent this year compared to last year, and that is a very significant number. Research shows there's a multitude of reasons that students are chronically absent, some being inside the school walls, many being outside the school walls as well. However, I do believe this is a very positive sign. Our support systems are working, and our kids are becoming more engaged at school, as you will see coming up shortly in the Explore Pathways and Academies of Global presentation. Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. O'Neal. Next up is our superintendent search process update. I'm pleased to provide the problem that is a run to complete the search. The survey has been updated by the search fund. It was minor edits. The survey was issued in the usual private, here at JCPS, inside of textlast, email gas, the website, and social media. Additional lead members of superintendent divided for the open file and review for survey sold, also these videos, and more, in their constituents' names. And last I checked, we have about seventy-five hundred people left in the survey, and I'm sure that that is even this. Bring down the guy who said Dr. Rossi. And so we're climbing, we need everyone to allow the survey, send it to all of the convention places, so we can kill the most as many people as possible. Secondly, the legal staff continue to work with and by leadership, for JACISPA, JACAS for the PBA, absolutely, that's the idea. Teamsters, regarding their efforts to popularize Superintendent's screening committee, we require for future one person, one talent, and one class project for nomination and election processes began this week, for the committee to fully popularize the elements that apply to the A. I do know that child, 15 years, you know, official line parents, so parents who are still serving on the street. Now the time to apply to 15, 15 today. Final contract with HYA has been negotiated and on board agenda for approval board tonight. And I'm pleased to have with us tonight, Mr. Nancy Perez and Mr. Michael Ali with HYA for attorney, that's me, a Zoom. And they'll discuss the discussion of very search-related items for consideration on this board. Welcome, Mr. Ali.
Good afternoon, good evening, good evening, members of the Board of Education. First off, we're missing, I did not congratulate the individuals who were sworn in today. Hats off to you. And I most certainly know that you guys are going to do an exceptional job advancing the cause of student achievement, as well as family engagement within your community. To the President, excuse me, the Chair, we use interchangeable titles depending on where we are in the country. To the Chair, as well as the Vice Chair, congratulations on unanimous appointments, respectively, by your colleagues. And so I'd like to just simply kick it over to Dr. Perez for a second, so she can provide the introduction.
Thank you so much. We have a PowerPoint here tonight that just is a mirror image of the items that we really wanted to walk the Board through relative to what we normally call a planning meeting. And I know we don't have a lot of time tonight, but there is a lot of decisions, a lot of direction that we need as we get started. I think it's really just important though to remember that this is really the first time we're really talking about the search, the opportunity. I haven't even met all of you, I haven't been there in person. So we're going to look forward to getting to know everyone and really working through the process. So if we could go to the next slide, just as a quick overview, the search process, we like to think of as four phases. We're entering into the very first phase, which is the engaging phase, is understanding the desires of the organization. Then we will go into recruitment, particularly after that leadership profile is complete. Then working with the committees and the Board through the select phase, and then ultimately the selection and the transition. This is really the search process highlighted at glance. We took the timeline that was provided by Jefferson County, and then we kind of added in some of the other items that we wanted to talk about. We will need dates for all of these events once that they are solidified. But as it was mentioned tonight, the survey has gone live. We will need a closing date for that. We'll make some recommendations later on in the presentation. In February, you'd like to get the application posted. We understand that there does want to be some feedback into that. We think that it would be really important to get something out there so that candidates that are starting to understand and think about where there are openings, that they at least know about the opening, that posting can be changed and updated, particularly when the leadership profile is complete. And then in March, that leadership profile will come to board the committees, to be approved, and then to be really that guide towards the recruitment and select phase. And the engagement will go on in February and March, and of course, advertising and recruitment as well. And then the all-important month here of April, where we begin to introduce candidates to the Board of Committees. Reviewing applicants with the screening committee, with the Board, moving into the interviews, round one, round two, determine finalists. And then into May, where we are recommending both an interview with the finalists and an opportunity for a committee board to meet the finalists. And finally, at the end of May, the end of June, we do the negotiation of a contract with the selected child. New superintendent start date of July 1. Next slide. So as we enter into the community engagement phase, we understand that we're working in tandem with committees. But we're looking at all of the different documents that will be given to us. Again, we're just starting this process. So of course, we'll be interviewing the Board members, there'll be focus groups, community forums, stakeholder survey that's already a kickoff, strategic plans, your goals, your guardrails, everything that will then become the leadership profile report. We will have a summary of the survey, summary of the focus groups, and also the desired characters. So community engagement, we have some ideas here for how we can start to attack this, and I probably want to talk a little bit about what you can do.
Yes, yes. And so what we would like to do is to be on the ground for a few days, engage in your community. And what we're proffering this evening for the Board to consider, and perhaps even augment if in fact this is inclined, is looking at this slide where February 13th, there'd be a business leaders breakfast, and then noon, there would be a civics leaders civic lunching. And so 5:00 PM, we work collaboratively with your multimedia slash IT staff to lay out a strategy where we can engage the teachers via a Zoom webinar. Simply provide an hour or so for engagement, dial out the teachers, collect questions, as well as provide them with some key essentials relative to the overall search and the process therein. Then February 14th, the morning, we would engage the principals. All of the principals in a very similar webinar format. Noon, with your classified staff, we would allow them to be able to coalesce around the webinar. And then later on that afternoon, we would engage your student council, student government presidents, as of course, there's so many high schools, and so we would be able to capture all of those individuals by way of webinar. Or if in fact, the Board was inclined, then we'd simply gather all the individuals in one environment, bring them out to the central office, whatever you believe is easier. Webinars or in-person engagement were more than a minimum to that. And then February 15th, we would engage the parents between 10:00 as well as noon. Parents from all throughout that entire district would have an opportunity to come in person. And for their capacity to have in-person slash Zoom webinars that would capture as many voices as we possibly can while we're on the ground. And so any thoughts or perspectives around the engagement strategy?
I don't see anything on here about the public.
Well, yes, but that's February, February 15th, we engage parents, and so the parents and the public would be synonymous.
Okay, I think it might be important to be sure that people know, even if they're not a JCPS parent, they are included in people that you want input.
Absolutely, and we have no problems with working with your staff to make certain that appropriate nominations used and ensure that we properly leverage social media and any other communication channels that the district uses in order to engage the community as a whole. Any other perspectives around this particular slide? Okay, to the next slide. So the presentation of slate, of the slate, we recommend keeping this process extremely confidential. Oftentimes, we go out to see the superintendents, and they might not want their Board to know, but generally speaking, that they're carrying processes. So we don't want to cause anyone to have any carport at home. And so HYA will present slated candidates to the Board and the various committees outlined by Dr. Perez. A best match in line with the leadership profile report. The applicants and all the details will be provided to the Board as well as the various committees. And then the Board within, you know, decide on the individuals that you want to be included within the process after receiving all of the input from the various screening committees. So the other screening committees will have an opportunity to input, as well as make recommendations which the Board will then receive. Next slide. First half introduces performance phase. This will require a tremendous amount of work from the superintendent aspirants. It'll be held in the boardroom or any other location the Board designates. 60 minutes of hearing Q and A for each candidate. Each candidate will prepare a presentation, a comprehensive presentation to the Board as well as the screening committee, essentially a SWAP analysis of the entire system. In this analysis, they're doing a deep dive. And again, the leadership profile report will help to unearth a lot of this. They'll use that data to come back with recommendations where they believe they can improve the system as a whole. This gives the Board, as well as the screening committee, an opportunity to be able to assess an individual's ability to critically think, as well as provide a different type of vision for which the community can coalesce around. In addition, will allow the Board, as well as the committee, to question, intently question the aspirants. So the screening committee and state will provide feedback to the Board, and the Board will then select the candidates who will move to the second interview process. Right, next slide. Round two, again, the boardroom or any location the Board deems appropriate, additional question format. Again, having an opportunity to critically analyze, not just the candidate's predagogical theory of action, theory of change, but also looking at what they've accomplished to understand their competencies, and then to understand areas of weakness that might be powerful or some instances that might not be powerful. It's very important to grill, just to be very candid, grill these individuals to make certain that they can rise irrespective of pressure and any of the challenges that the district has. This individual has taken the time to uncover and/or discover and bring forth some potential recommendations as to how they would address those particular issues. Again, the Board will have an opportunity to ask questions and make statements. Again, the screening committee will be intimately involved, providing inputs, and that the Board can then narrow this process down to two finalists. Interview three or two finalists, so again, depending on the slate, you can interview two, you can interview three. And so the way in which this event will break down, the interview will be with the Board, the interview will be with the screening committee, as well as the advisory committee. It'll be three separate interviews, to make that very clear, so that this will happen here, three separate interviews within this process. And in fact, the Board desires, you can merge the various interviews into one. But we're more than prepared to have three separate interviews during this day. And then looking at the final interview, the community forum for everyone, parents, non-parents, business leaders, academic leaders, individuals in a nonprofit space, as well as neighboring civics, national governmental officials. They too would have a chance to come and meet the top candidates. Perhaps we're looking at a larger venue than the community, theater, art, something along those lines. Both candidates are on stage, almost akin to a president's debate format. And there'll be questions from the audience online moderated by a professional who will also introduce questions, and these questions will be derived from their leadership report, but also questions derived from their psychological assessment, also known as the TTI. And then after which, the Board will then select the superintendents. The verification of items for the search, I'm sorry.
Yeah, so before we move on to that, I just wanted to say that, you know, any of the process for these interviews, the Board certainly can change. You're looking at your calendar, looking at what can you believe is best practice given large urban searches that can be both confidential and then public at the end. But again, this is your search, and we certainly can pivot or change based on your desires. I also just wanted to add that as each round is finished, we do have lots of techniques where we can help work with the Board and the committees to come to your incentives. And so later on in the process, we can work through a interview protocols workshop that explains some of those ways that we help Boards come to a agreement. And so I just wanted to make sure that before we move on to the last slide here, let you know that this is some recommendations in order to move the process forward, and certainly, and give it time to change. Next slide.
Okay, this is the verification of items for the search, and so, Dr. Perez, you want to walk through this particular standard?
The first thing is transparency, and we think it's a really good practice to have a page on your website where all the information relative to the search can be. That way, everybody can point people to that same location, information that we give to the Board, the committees, that can be made public, all of that can go there, and then even the finalists that are made public, those final two people, their bios can be up there, opportunities for the community to come out, for example, the forum, all of that can be there, in addition to, for example, the leadership profile. So we do want to start talking to the Board members, and so we're going to work on getting a list of contact information so that we can be in touch with each of you. There's going to be a closing date for the survey that you guys have already been sent live and inactive. We're recommending February 14th, only because that then is coinciding with those community engagement weekend that we put together. That way, all the information will rock together, so we can start to get that leadership profile together as a draft, whether we invite a committee and the Board. The focus groups, we gave just an example tonight, of course, we can take any recommendation. We can have several going on simultaneously on the same days. They can be in-person and virtual, as Makai just said tonight. The slated candidates and expenses, we recommend that you do reimburse candidates for their travels. We just wanted to ensure that we're clear on that, so we can let the candidates know. Advertising options, when you say it's good to go, we'd like to get this up on our website as soon as possible, so we can start to get a buzz out there that the search is going on. Putting it in our newsletters, in our networks, our social media engines, all of that, we'd like to start in February. We also would like to advertise it outside of A28 and every week, ASA hours in Nav City, first quarter cost of $3,920. A job posting draft was in that agenda tonight. The job posting can be as long or as short as you would like it. We've seen districts do very, very different things. Tonight, we just put forward a draft, it can change, once, for example, a leadership profile has been established. But I do think it would be a good idea to get something up before the leadership profile is done. So at least, we're starting to get a buzz about this position being coming available. So it can literally just say up the title of your district, and when the leadership profile is expected, or it can have some basic background information, like we provided as an example in China Live tonight. And then finally, background checks. We will facilitate independent third-party background checks. We recommend that we do that on all slated candidates. That does come at a cost of $19.50 per candidate, and the TTI behavior assessment is $250. If the Board does not want that, that's your prerogative, you can just let us know. So these are the other items that we would like some direction on as we start to get organized to continue to work through this process.
And now let me underscore, and so we're clear emphatically, we would not want you to not conduct the background check. If you'd like to not move forward with the TTI behavior assessment, we understand that. But in today's times, you want a comprehensive background check on any senior executive that you're hiring, especially the chief executive on the superintendent of larger school systems, Jefferson County. Any questions or thoughts on any of the slides we presented thus far? Okay, the next slide, I think that's, is that the end, okay?
Yeah. So I think what's really important for us as we look forward is to talk to each of you. So I think what's really important for us as we look forward is to talk to each of you, understanding the committees are finally formulated. But really a fun person for us to be able to work through drafts of different agenda items, to be able to work through with the staff, what are the committees, how are they referred to? How can we get the list of things, how are people invited, all of those nuances? And then of course, getting dates on the book system as possible. You know, we've kind of outlined the process by month, but getting dates for those, there'll be one, two, and three. Getting dates for any additional focus group, getting the dates to the committee board. That's all very important to solidify as soon as possible.
Mr. Chair, any questions? The doubts?
Thank you all for being with us. Thank you, Mr. Robson. Thank you, Dr. Perez, for being with us tonight. I would like to entertain a couple of motions in order to move this process forward. The first motion that I would like to entertain is insisting that every person is considered for his job. We'll have a background check on the TTI. Just listen. Thank you all in favor. I didn't say that, I'm sorry. Mr. Perez, if you said, thank you all in favor. As has, thank you. Second motion that I would like to entertain is to authorize Chief A to post a position as the leadership profile is developed. By the way, the one that kind of went as established, this trying to take the bar, Mr. Craig, all in favor? As has. Third motion I'd like to entertain is a closing date for the survey. Mr. Perez, would you raise your hand? This council has a lot of, everyone is working as the closing date for the survey. They have been sent to the committees. I like to kind of, this was our present, this is Ben, this is Craig, all in favor? As has, thank you very much. Thank you again, Mr. Ali. Thank you, Dr. Perez.
One more item, please, the advertising, external advertising, if you want to adopt that tonight or wait?
Will you repeat what you asked?
There was a motion on the posting of the position. There is the external advertising in A S A Alas and Naps. Do we want to, if it came out tonight or just for future meetings?
I'd like to extend a motion to post it in all the places involved. This is my, this is my screen, I would say, as has, thank you. All right, are we on the road? On for it?
Absolutely, absolutely.
Thank you all. Well, now we see the recommendation for the goal of the board. And it will go three dot one, Craig leading, and three dot two to Craig Matt. Mr. Craig will lead us in the central office.
And by the way, background for our meeting with the Board of Education, we have the designated strategic plan, vision twenty twenty and twenty fifteen, under which the Board of Education has operated. Since then, we had an update from academics on the journey to assess that our last meeting on displace that education is implemented. Beginning in early twenty twenty-three, the Board of Education underwent organizational work with the Council of Great Lakes Schools to establish goals for academic outcomes for fifty-nine school students. We were advised and ultimately by the end of twenty twenty or middle of twenty twenty-four, adopted five goals for outcome for fifty-nine school students. Two goals around third grade literacy, eighth grade memoracy, and transition readiness goals around fifth grade, eighth grade, and twelfth. Dr. Dawson, if you would, the key for us, if you don't mind, the high school readiness goal that we'll receive a report on this evening. I know that we're underneath the big picture goal, we're receiving interim readiness goals for ninth grade reading, reading, and tenth grade math tonight. But our transition readiness goal for high school students, we have added a bit of care to them.
So the overall high school academic readiness goal is a work in progress because we are including both ninth and tenth grade academic readiness as well as our defensive learning scores. So that will be a, we'll have baseline data this summer once we finish collecting information on our defensive learning rubrics. But in terms of the ninth grade reading goal for tonight that we'll be reviewing, the goal is that the percentage of ninth grade students can have their expected achievement benchmarks, that is the ACT college readiness benchmarks. And reading will increase from forty percent from the spring of twenty twenty-four to fifty percent by June of twenty twenty-seven.
And the data that we have received from the superintendent's office and from the district is there on your screen. We are reviewing data this evening on ninth grade reading development on the fall of two thousand and twenty-three through the winter of two thousand and twenty-five. As we just heard, overall goal has been set to be the interim goal. The assessment score will increase from forty point five percent in June of twenty twenty-four to fifty percent by June of twenty twenty-seven. You can see the demographic breakdown there with the chart at the bottom left hand on your screen. And then a summary of that comes us there to the right of it. Should I continue on this track, do you know, or would you like to go over? Here we are. Thirty-four percent, we understand of all ninth grade students by the met or exceeded the ACT college readiness readiness benchmark in reading as of the winter of twenty-four, twenty-five assert assessment. From the fall of twenty-four to the winter of twenty-four, twenty-five, it's an increase for every student group. Student substitution had percent overall, sixty percent African-American students up five point nine percent. Those identifying as two or more is five point nine percent, white students about one seven percent, thirty-one five percent, multi-lingual learners, four point two percent, and our E C E students up three point eight percent. So we are on track to this interim goal that was adopted by the Board of Education with some improvement strategies from the district that we're going to have a very great overview from. If you don't mind, if you can get on this train for me, thank you.
So we'll start with a little bit. First, I wanted to kind of level set on the test, the CERT test, which is different than the MAP test that we take K through eight. So what you've heard before is the MAP test, which essentially assesses kids on their grade level at that time. The CERT, on the other hand, is a predictor of how students will do on the ACT. So you will see lower scores in many ways on the CERT, especially when you're talking ninth and tenth graders because they are gathering the content to be successful on the ACT and meet those college benchmarks along the way. So a ninth grader taking the reading still has the rest of ninth grade, tenth, and half of eleventh, at least, will clearly take it. A sophomore in math has half of usually geometry and algebra two, sometimes advanced courses, but they have those still to go on CERT. So I just wanted to let you know it is a very different assessment than what we usually take. But our work with our high schools is to ensure that we get our kids ready and meet those ACT benchmarks so that they can have the academic portion of college ready. So, Dr. Ellison, I'll turn it over to Chief Moore, who want to introduce your team that's here?
Certainly. Thank you, Dr. Pauli. Good evening, board members. A special welcome to all of you members for your first meeting. For those of you who have not yet been offered a report, Chief of School, through here with you, with our team, this is our fourth and final installment of the first round of updates for the board goals that you have set before, before we transition next month to guardrails. Unlike the previous three from you experienced members, this particular data actually has fall and winter data that you'll be looking at. So you won't just get a year to year, which I'll concede. Talk into it?
You can do that.
I love the coolness though. I don't even know what I would say. Instead of just doing a year to year, you also get a fall, a fall and winter. So it's a different look than the previous three. So with me tonight, for my particular team, I have the executive administrator of the Academy Global, Tim Morales. Executive administrator of our magnet alternative in choice schools, called the MAC schools, is Heaven Moss. And their supervisor, I think he's been up here before in front of some of you, Dr. Justin Pelisson, he's assistant student of high school. And returning, he was here for the middle school update with Dr. Meyer, the assistant student of our celebrated improvement school known as A I S. So two board members, get used to that. We're going to do our best and work in collaboration with Dr. Pauli. If there's any questions you may add about that, thank you.
Dr. Ellison, would you just tell us a little bit more about the work on CERT and how that aligns with our goals?
Sure. Thank you, Dr. Pauli. Joe Scholl, board members, good to be with you all this evening. We adopted CERT as our progress monitoring assessment last year. So this is our second full year with CERT. Our freshmen and sophomores actually take CERT in the fall, winter, and spring. And our juniors take it in fall and winter because in the spring, they have the state mandated ACT in March. Our intention was really to give our students exposure to what the ACT is. The state added it as a required assessment. We were map testing all of our students, but most of our high school students hadn't had any experience with the ACT or anything that was ACT-like. So we adopted CERT, one, to give them exposure to that type of assessment, but two, to provide resources to prepare them for the assessment. EPREP, which is the company that created CERT, provides resources to students that they can work on independently, on their own, and also resources that teachers can use to support students in improving their performance as they approach benchmark. The unique thing about CERT is obviously it identifies where students are strong and also areas where they need to grow and can match and tailor resources specifically to those growth areas. So what we're finding across our schools is greater use of those individual resources by students and teachers and school leaders can tailor and determine the best ways to utilize those resources to best support students on their journey toward benchmark.
And I would say, you know, we talked the last two times specifically a lot about H Q I R, a high-quality instructional resource, that is the aligned curriculum. We started K through eight. So could someone update us on where we are in high school on H Q I R? Because, you know, this is really the beginning of that process at the high school level.
So for the high school, in ninth grade, we are doing I M. So that's one thing in terms of our ninth grade teachers have received training, support, the appropriate resources to implement I M in ninth grade with integrity. Depending on where the school is, if we're, it's more of a staggered implementation in ten, eleven, and twelve. But as we go on to next year, we'll be moving closer to full implementation of I M. For reading, which is what this goal is on, we have adopted my perspectives. My perspectives aligns very closely with the E L curriculum, that is our, which is our K through eight resource. And we have adopted that nine through twelve. So there's been training and support along the way, but this will be our new adoption year in my perspectives.
Thank you. So we are kind of in that implementation and it will begin phased in in math and English over the next several years at high school. So it is a process as well. We just wanted to let you know that. Do you want to do math and then take questions? Or anything on math you want to add?
Continuing on in the fifth grade CERT advanced scores, interim goal around the math data that the Board of Education adopted, which percentage of students in grade ten who met or exceeded their expected achievement benchmarks. In math, according to the spring CERT assessment, we increased from sixteen point three percent from June of twenty-four to twenty-six percent by June of twenty-seven. And the report from the administration of the Board of Education is that we are on track with that. The data is there, introducing individual student demographic groups, from fall twenty-three to winter twenty-four, twenty-five, available for your review. We understand that fourteen point one percent of all tenth grade students have either met or exceeded these college readiness benchmark event on the winter twenty-four, twenty-five CERT assessment. And then the percentage of those exceeding increase for every student group, white up eight point eight percent, all students up six point one percent, expanding four point nine percent, multi-lingual learners up four point four percent, those that identify with two or more up four point four percent, our three-year-old population up three point seven percent, African-American population up three point one percent, and E C E students up two point four percent. Dr. Pauli?
Thank you. And so I didn't know who wants to take math, what they think we're doing well with math to support students in high school and where we need to go. Dr. Meyer, you want that or?
Sure, I'll certainly go ahead and begin. So part of the process and then just to see the scores moving in the right direction for both of the goals is the work obviously inside the classroom first and foremost with our teachers, ensuring all of our kids receive the guaranteed and liable curriculum, not just what we teach, but how we assess. And part of our work within the school division and as we've worked with academics is to protect and monitor and support the work that is occurring in every J C P S school. So part of our work is for math, there is a math plan with different components that three times a year that we're monitoring and supporting the implementation of the H Q I R and the work in math from a very basic level all the way to consistent implementation, which is the goal for every J C P S school to be able to get there. In the interim, when we look at the CERT scores in high school, each of our high schools are reporting out through their vital signs how they're performing academically. And with each of these numbers and percentages, there's a child attached to that. So part of the math plan and part of the vital science work is getting down to understanding where each child is performing and then seeing what support that they need, whether it is an intervention, whether it is an extension, just to ensure that they're on the right path. Setting goals for each and every one of our students is important and we have plans within the district, both through our vital science process and through our math plan to support each one.
After you take questions. Before you do, we had a conversation where we prepared yesterday about taking the ninth and tenth grade data in context because of the state that we're experiencing with transitions. We might elaborate it from that to the board. Yeah, that's what we said on the CERT test. The CERT test, once again, you will see lower amounts because kids are on the front end of their learning. So as opposed to just being a snapshot of the one class or level that the student's in, the CERT is all math classes that a student will take in high school or all English classes that a student will take in high school. So once again, it's predicting what we will, our students will be doing as they take the ACT in the eleventh, tenth, eleventh, or twelfth grade. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Craig. Thank you, Mr. Moore and Dr. Ellison and the entire table for the very important work. We'll take questions now. Do you have any comments? I have no question. Please, Dr. Perez.
Just a few. When we set the trajectory, trajectory, what, from forty to fifty? Will that change with the results of this year? Or will we have a different trajectory after we find out in the spring what this spring's score is? Because I know we're hoping it's forty-three there, but will we reset the trajectory every year?
So the Council of Great Lakes schools advises us not to. So we have set targets out to twenty thirty, actually. But what you see here is the targets go out to twenty twenty-seven, and that's the midpoint. So if you have a long-term goal that's six years, what the recommendation from the council is that at the midpoint in three years, in twenty twenty-seven, that we take a look and we reevaluate and assess, is this the right metric? Do we need to change course? Do we need to adjust? And so at that midpoint, there'd be an opportunity to, to reset the targets that we have in place. So for example, with ninth grade- So for example, with ninth grade, what you see is we were at a 40 in the spring of 2024. Our goal is to get to a 43 by this spring, by spring of 2025. And we made a six-point jump from fall to winter. So now we're at a 34. We're going to have to make a bigger jump from winter to spring to get that target. But the short answer is 2027, that would be the midpoint at which time we would want to assess to see whether we want to change the target.
I don't know why, but this feels more realistic to me than anything we've ever done. I guess the progress that we're making, and it's showing, that we don't just have our target goal, and then still down here a big gap between those and the far-off goal. So now this feels realistic and a very encouraging sign. We've got some good games in the reading from my tray, and the three to six point, I guess. Besides CERT, what things are happening in the classroom? Because high school reading is not really a separate course for most of us, it's, you teach English, and you try and incorporate what you can in the English class, but there's not a separate reading class for most kids. So how are we giving these games? What we want to contribute to education?
Thank you. So you're absolutely right. High school teachers are not trained to teach students how to read. And so as we learn more about our students' literacy skills, and the areas that they need improvement, this is an area where it helps our learning. So we are thankful to work with our academics division for training that supports secondary educators and what you do if a kid can't read. In the meantime, we're working really hard to implement HQIR as a fidelity, which ensures that all students are exposed to rigorous texts and working through those texts to build their knowledge and confidence in reading tough texts. Teachers are scaffolding MML students and our ECT students. In fact, today we were at a high school where they have a class for students who still needs some foundational work, and those students are not pulled from tier-one instruction, but instead are supported through additional foundational skill support. So we are seeing more of those types of strategies in high school. Additionally, many of our high schools practice the adolescent literacy model strategies, which is really just good reading teaching, which teaches students how to approach any content, not just English, which we might be thinking about, but science, social studies, career technical ed. What do we do when we approach a text? We don't know what to do, we don't understand, we don't comprehend, how do we slow down? So teachers in general in the high school zone are becoming much more familiar with what to do when we ask kids to read. You can't just say, read this book, answer the questions at the end. And so really, the number one thing that we're doing in the high school zone is working with academics to improve our knowledge and how to help kids learn to read, and making sure they're exposed to grade-level texts with appropriate background knowledge being built through that. Also, I think it's really important to say that literacy is across all content areas, and so I'm really proud that with the CERT assessment, many of our high school or social studies centers are taking on a reading proportion, and so that's helping out our English teachers a little bit. So for our long-term, reading is considered the main change of thing, but it is truly a high school thing.
Interesting. What about, well, are the teachers all trained in that adolescent literacy model, which is conscious and, does everybody understand? Is there formal training?
There is, there are formal trainings, and we have had many cohorts of teachers trained. It was not required at every high school to do the adolescent literacy model training because we knew that that was really not needed for kids downstate. It was a great way to start thinking about and talking about literacy in high school, and we're all teachers, and we've got to support their reading skills. And so our next step is to really think, what do we do with that thought?
Can anybody take obstacles? What obstacles are we trying to overcome?
I'll start as the negative, if I miss anything, you can fix it up for me. I would say the big thing is ensuring that we are providing appropriate interventions in the context of the classroom. So Dr. Meyer talked about the literacy plan and how we leverage the literacy plan to help us analyze, do data, and attach specific names to the data, and then make decisions about how we best support the student. What we're learning with the implementation of the HQIR is that it's not so much about just tier-one instruction, which is your general instruction, but it's also about tier-two instruction, which still happens in the classroom. So it's not so much pulling a group of kids out to double, triple-dose something, but it's about the dexterity and flexibility that our teachers have in the classroom to be able to pivot and reteach something in a different way, or to break into smaller groups and support this group here while this group is working on something else, to ensure this group of kids is getting what they need to be on track. We are growing in our competence in our buildings and our teacher teams, not just the regular planning around standards and standards-aligned instruction, but also about assessing the data and then making appropriate decisions about how to best support students in the classroom, and then also scaling our teachers up so that they can do that more readily and more easily.
That's a good answer. In terms of observations, and that's my last question, how often are we able to observe our teachers and that these practices are actually taken?
Well, working with academics, we have HQIR look force for both reading and math. So our divisions, the high school, AIS, and working with academics, we're able to go in and have specific look force, whether it's math or reading, so we can observe and what we want to, we're able to collect that data, and then we're able to talk to our principals about that. And then our principals also work together in cohorts, so they're able to collaborate and communicate together about how implementation is going, what positives we're seeing in the classroom, what are potential areas for growth. So it's not just support from our division or from academics, but also our principals being able to communicate and support together.
Thank you so much. All of the, those three members to listen, breathe in there. Thank you.
Just a couple of quick ones. My first time, so apologies to Dr. questions. It says we're on track, but it said we should be at 40% June 24, we're at 34. Do you, like, why, I guess, am I missing something there?
So 40% is for this, sorry, 40% is for the spring assessment, but 34 is what we were in December. So they're going to take this test again in the spring, and so we showed a big increase from fall to winter. We're expecting we're on.
Okay. Awesome, thank you. And then how does, so I'm assuming CERT is used across the county or to evaluate this? How do we compare to other districts like this? Are we where they are, above, below? Do you have any, do you understand?
That is a great question, and this is our second year, actually not even our whole, we haven't finished the full second year of that, but that's absolutely something that we can reach out to the company and see if we can compare districts and see what the national market's like and. We are doing a linking study to see how students are performing on CERT, the best data at that time. And so we'll have to work on how to see if we finish the second year of testing.
One of your best, Don, one. Thank you, guys. Good job. Ms. Liston?
No additional questions.
Ms. Doris?
Thank you, Chair Schul. This is really good, but I still have a concern with this increase in the gap between white and black students in math, in grade level. And so you mentioned some things that we were doing, and are we using specific data, as you just mentioned, Dr. Meyer, that's attached to specific students for reading? Are we doing that same thing with math?
Yes, yes, we are. It is part of the vital science process where we break down data by demographic, and that's part of what our reporting and follow-up in the school division to our schools to assess how our students are doing. And tied often to that is our school's CP plan, racial equity plan, as part of that academic work. So absolutely, that is something that we focus on with our school leaders.
And so that's how we're assessing the data to address the math gap?
Yes. It's a component in the math plan. So when you look at component three, that deals with assessing the data, and component four deals with intervention instruction specifically in the math plan, that is what's prompting school leaders to create systems and structures to support teachers in working through that process.
So as a board, as a community, what can people do to help this decision? Or is there anything we can do?
It is a multifaceted problem. JCPS, I think, like our peer districts, we're a little bit ahead in reading and a little bit behind in math. And what we're hoping is, you know, as Dr. Dawson said, we have several new components in place as a district that we haven't had before. So part of Dr. Paul's optimism, it's optimism grounded in this evidence-based work that we're doing now, of stabilizing an HQIR, having a robust math implementation plan. This is the first year of us being able to do this and work through the different components and indicators inside that work, and again, that tier approach of getting down to the student level and being able to set goals. So this is ongoing work for the district, but with training and support, we have a clear direction of where we need to go.
I would say, just to add to that, I think number one thing, community, when I talk about my superintendent report, I think student attendance is a community-wide issue, you know, things from health and wellness, social services, mental health, all of these things come into play, but attendance is really important in this work. So I would say that, the community getting involved in that, I think you will hear the Academy's global and explore pathways, business partners, how they engage kids. I mean, it's not many times it's math, but it's directly getting kids engaged in the school. I think our churches and nonprofits can help us with our summer backpack league, making sure we have sites for kids to do extra learning after school and in the summertime. So I think those are the things that I would say the community could really pitch in with this.
And have we put together a plan to talk about these issues with those stakeholders?
Yes, that is our communication with Vault 502, and then you'll hear a lot about our business partnerships moving forward, and actually Vault 502 is digging deep with us on student attendance right now, too, and bringing it to the community.
Thank you.
And it has to be, we have to reciprocate that effort at the school level, too, in every component, or each reading and math component, there's a parent involvement and parent engagement. So it is up to the school to make sure that they're following through those plans, and that's our job as leaders here, to make sure and monitor that progress of the parent engagement. And I just want to bring real briefly on Dr. Meyer and his work at the high school level. The high school part of the gap is down 10% in our AIS high school. So those are some of the most challenging schools. So the work that's going on with AIS and our CSI schools are very impressive at the high school level. So again, another indicator, one of the key indicators of success is attendance.
Sorry, I did have a question there, especially after that conversation. So the reading scores are better than the math scores. What is the, is there some messaging or narrative about why anybody would want to learn math? It seems like it's probably harder to get people to care to try to learn math. So what do we tell people? What do we tell students about why they should care?
We were taught in summer training that we're all math people. That's why you're hearing that. No, in all seriousness, what we try to help our students understand is that literacy and numeracy skills are foundational for both college and career. It doesn't matter what you are going to do in your next phase of life after high school, you need these skills. And so part of the stretch with our teachers, as we continue to build skill around implementing the HQIR with integrity, is helping them teach the skills and the standards with a sense of relevance, so that students see a true connection between what they're learning in the content and how it applies to real life. One of the most challenging experiences I had as a high school student was sitting in a math class and only learning it in isolation, right? Practicing the odd problems in class because the answers were in the back, and doing the evens for homework because the answers weren't in the back. And no one could tell me, and I couldn't even explain, how that work was relevant to life. So what we're coaching now our teachers to do is, as they are drafting lesson plans, to really think about student experience, and to think about the relevance of the standards, and to teach the work in such a way that students have a connection to it, see meaning and value in it, and understand that it's going to be a critical development.
I think it's so important to remember that these are standard exit tests. They are decontextualized, they're biased, so they're not always going to be as accurate measurement of what suits those sometimes, which does suck to those. For example, being in classroom, high school classroom, and we're probably using pronouns, and not everyone who was coming was. So oftentimes, their language in our questions, in our standardized test, that are not relevant to our students' experiences, so we have to take that into context.
I was a math major, but I raised three kids, and they all went to college, and none of them took math. It's just, I struggle to try to explain to somebody who doesn't, who's not a gamer or a puzzler, or even why I'm doing it. Trying to message that is definitely important. Thank you. And your successes.
Thank you, Ms. Liston. I just want to thank you for the last comment. As a reminder that this is decontextualized, their students are much more than test scores, and the Board of Education continues its work, we need to focus on the outcomes for our students, and we're going to continue to do this, but remembering that, and as Susan wraps up his work, and all the things that have been happening with learning, with all of the, kind of, backpack, and getting success now, remembering that it's going to be important if we transition these next steps, we just believe that. I'm curious, is there, I heard this question, I was with Dr. Dawson, is there any data that tracks students participating in how the number of people learn, such as Black Chief, Lincoln Foundation, Kuma, the other components, only so that they can, as compared to students at the level?
Not so much at the high school level. Again, there is general research that says high dosage tutoring makes a difference for academic outcomes. We have our own national data that says students that participate in the summer learning programs have less of a summer slide, same thing with enrichment programs, the community has said, the Vault 502, we show that students that participate in that are showing improvements. Those aren't always targeted for high school students, but that, again, from Vault 502 account, their next step would be how to be, reach our high school students during those times when they're working and doing, doing other things like that.
That's why I wondered about the programs, particularly with the mission work on UNI, and their work is often specific to preparing students for the TDP and commerce preparation. I'm wondering how they're, how they're, any, any sense, any, you have to, and relates to, to students. I'm wondering how they're going, how they're intersecting with U S data and relates to student performance on SERC and P S two and under other metrics. I share our work and trends coming, and I think it would be worthwhile to trace that data to see what those programs may be doing, how they're helping us in our work and helping other students. Maybe maybe it's a compilation or some option. I have a question about what they're doing about consults. Again, thank you for your work, thank you for being here, thank you for the time that you dedicated to this group of pressure.
There are motions for the Speaker of the Board to support all the general points on four and nine, for a reading and three, and a student for a question. The spread of the story with all the favor. I have a question for the three, for the, for the goal model of the court. There are persons requesting to address the board on action items. I think there are those that do, or any of those. Two thousand and eight, please.
In accordance with Board Policy Zero-One, Doc. Four-Two-One, the Board expects that persons who have signed up to address the board will limit their remarks to the subjects that they listed at the time they signed up, that their presentation will not include any defamatory or abusive remarks about the subject, and that they will present the remarks in a manner that is consistent with the orderly conduct of the meeting. Also, in accordance with Board Policy, the Board reserves the right to limit, extend, or terminate discussion on any subject. Discussion of personnel matters is not permitted as state law requires that personnel matters are within the sole authority of the superintendent. The speaker may not initiate charges or complaints against an individual district employee by name or position in order to ensure confidentiality and fairness for the employee. Speakers before the entire board are not allowed to use props, displays, or any other objects during their remarks. Each speaker is allowed three minutes to address the board and may not share these minutes with any other speaker. At the end of two and a half minutes, a bell will sound once. You will then have thirty seconds to finish your statement. At the end of three minutes, the bell will sound twice, indicating that your time is up. The superintendent will look into the speaker's issues and if necessary, represent the board in following up or recommend action to the board. The full Board Policy concerning public participation in open meetings is available for viewing on our website and at our assignment sheet.
Hello, everyone. My name is Love Eden and bus speeding was stripped away from me last year. I am a senior at Dupont Media High School, Wipe Pass, majoring in musical theater. I want to start off by saying that I am incredibly grateful to be able to mention that I am majoring in such a distinctive major, light musical theater. Though this is such a unique path we don't want to pursue, there is an abundance of students wanting to follow that same path, if not similar. More students than most people would think. Visual arts, performing arts, medicine, pre-med, game design, these are just a few programs that hundreds of students in our country want to focus on. Magnet schools are giving a space and environment to learn and train for these interests. I fought for two years to get into magnet just so I could have that level of experience and knowledge that came with majoring in musical theater at the youth performing arts school. There are families that do not have access to the transportation that is needed to get children to and from school, let alone the time to. It disheartens me to think how this decision was made without consideration of students and student family voices. This is why I helped to write the Really Young Prodigy song, Where My Butt Said. This has been watched around the nation. Not only has our music video been viewed by more than seventy-one thousand people, but has been commented on and agreed upon by many families. This is a nationwide issue, but together as a county, we can create innovative change to better the education of our students. It is so important to be able to have these opportunities and choices that Magnet School went to six schools and considerations they give to JCPS students. Taking away the busing from Magnet Schools took away access to these opportunities. I am in favor of putting more bus routes and more busing back into the schools they were taking away from. Once again, I am Love Eden, and I am one of the twenty-nine hundred Magnet School students who will be positively impacted if you vote yes to reinstate busing for Magnet Schools. And I'm going to say that one more time. I am Love Eden, and I am.